All right, Maureen, do you have the agenda in front of you?
I have the agenda. Call the meeting to order and then accept the minutes from May 10th's meeting.
Yep. All right. So this is Tim. Melvin's trying to get in. We'll try to do the, get the meeting started without him. I think he's only able to be on until 2:30 anyway. I'm on fine. I just don't have the agenda in front of me. So. So it's called a meeting to order. Do we have, Lindsay, are you here?
Yep, I'm here.
Great, I'm here.
If you can hear me, I'll make quorum. So go ahead with the meeting.
You make quorum.
I can barely, I can hear you, but barely.
And I see Fiori just showed up. So. All right, first is to accept the minutes of the last meeting. Anybody want to make, make a motion to accept them? So move. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Melvin, I'm assuming you're a yes on that? All right, the next item was to review some reports, I believe, that came in. Am I right, Maureen?
Review Big Y Warehouse Project, request of Fiori Grissette.
Did we get a report on that?
Everything was attached, everything was sent.
Yep. Fiori, are you on? No, he just left. Okay, I'm, I've just got to go over and check out that report. Lindsay, do you have?
What's his? Yeah.
I'm just wondering who has the report in front of them. I'm, I'm doing this on my iPhone. And I just can't, I don't have everything in front of me. I'm fine on the meeting, but I don't have the report in front of me. I know, I know Maureen sent it, but I'm trying to get to it.
I've got the report. I can try to send you a picture right now, Tim.
All right, no, that's fine. Just, just give a. If you've got it, you requested it. Appreciate it. You have comments on the report?
Yeah, we, are we officially started the meeting, right? We got the three of us. Melvin is.
Yeah, just so you know, while you just skipped away for a second, we opened the meeting. Melvin was here, is here, in and out. So there's four of us, actually.
Okay. Okay, cool. All right, you guys want me to give you what I see on this report?
Yeah, yes, that would be great.
All right, so bear with me because I gotta pull up a different screen. I, I, I was sitting there for 50 minutes and I ended up driving.
Nope, no problem. As long as we can truck our way through this agenda.
I have the agenda open and they can share my screen if that would be helpful.
It would.
That would be great.
Oh, Maureen, would you mind giving me the permission to share my screen?
Sure.
Thank you.
If you want to tell me how to do that, definitely.
But I, I think I'm able to. All right, I'm just pulling it up right now.
Are we doing that? Is that you, Elizabeth?
Yes.
Great. Just looking at the participants. We know Melvin. Charlie, are you on?
Melvin's here.
Yep, good. Eloy, Eloy, are you on?
Eloy is here.
All right, great. Welcome. Fiori and Frank.
Present.
And Frank, what is your last name?
Pear.
And are, who are you representing?
Fontaine Brothers.
All right, great, thank you. The only other thing I saw here was, and I see Lisa Clausen is on, that's great, welcome Lisa. And I saw 73010.
That's me, Maureen.
That's you, okay, great. All right. We're getting there, coming along. I now able to see the agenda, so I've successfully manipulated this stuff. All right, Fiori, did you want to give a report or your, your view of the Big Y report? Fiori, are you there?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I had you back on mute.
It's all right. Review, review of Big Y Warehouse.
Some old emails. Correct. So I had gone through some old emails and I found where, right after we had had both Big Y and the general contractor in front of us as a board, they had very poor numbers. And we had asked them to come back in front of the board in three months. So, we had, I don't even think they were, you know, say halfway done. The problem is, we never had a follow-up meeting with Big Y. We never saw the final numbers. We pretty much knew nothing about Big Y. So I asked for the report. And just looking over this report, we've got three categories that did not meet out of the four. One is residents are at, at 15.1%. They met the minority, 33%, outstanding. Came close with the female hours of a 5.13% and came close with the veteran hours of 4.2%. So I guess the, you know, it, it kinda is sad that we never really got a chance to, you know, we, we had the contractor come in, the general contractor. We had donor and said, what are you doing about these numbers? They were supposed to improve them because they probably, you know, I'm sure they did improve them, but as you can see, not even close enough. If you guys remember in the meeting, I asked the general contractor being from, you know, with the New Hampshire-based companies, the Connecticut-based companies, how are you going to meet these numbers? And to a certain degree, you're setting yourself up for failure. And as you can see, these numbers, three out of four, did not meet the requirement. So I guess the real actuality is, do we still do a follow-up and say, as the board, we were supposed to monitor? I don't, I don't think there's anything to enforce here. Am I correct at that, Melvin, or, you know, as city councilors, that we, were we just monitoring it because they got a $5 million tiff? And they asked us to keep track of the project because they said they would agree to the REO guidelines? I'm assuming past that, there's nothing more we're supposed to do with it, except for monitor it. But I think we should send the letter out as saying that, pretty disappointed, or however our standard letter goes, that this general contractor didn't even come close to the numbers for this particular project. Well, again, three out of four, I don't, they came through some two categories, but again, unless it's grenades, close is not good enough. You either meet it or you don't.
Well, I'm disappointed at the numbers and I'm gonna be quick because I'm not gonna stay on here very long, but I'm not, it, it was the value. We can send a letter, it won't matter much, but we can send a letter if that makes anybody on the committee happy. We can talk about what this should have happened, if that makes anybody happy. But right now, the, the thing is, is it's over, it's done. If this, if a report or the documentation as presented can be used by procurement for the future, for this contractor when it comes up for the next bid, then that would be appropriate. But what would be the value of, of, I mean, when we talk about would they were supposed to come back in three months? We couldn't even get three months worth of meetings together as a committee. And I'm really, you know, I mean, think about, it took us 20 minutes just to get this meeting started. So, I mean, you know, we. I'm not gonna, I'm not going to project our dysfunction onto Big Y or to any contractor. But we, I, and I, and this is on me, I have to get our, our house in order before I can start trying to get, you know, hold somebody accountable for something when I can't even get the link to get on a meeting that I'm supposed to be chairing. So I apologize for my attitude and frustration, but right now I'm a little irritated. And I'm not mad at anybody particularly, it's just, 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 the system isn't working real well. And our dysfunction, you know, so, you know, my rambling is a reflection.
Focus Springfield didn't have it, so it, the, it lies with them.
Yeah, well, the thing is, some of the burden for, for them will be decreased as of July 18th, which is, I believe is the 15th, is the state mandate that we as a council goes in. So then they would only have to do these, a few meetings other than their regular meetings like they used to do, be pre-COVID. So I mean, I mean, we couldn't do any of the work for the city if it wasn't for Focus, so I'm not casting those stones at them, nor am I at you, Maureen. I'll take this responsibility. I should be more proficient than better prepared. And, you know, if anything, maybe I need to get the links or ask for the links to come out. But even the emails, Fiori sent it, it, it came as a text. I didn't get a link from you at all. And that's maybe just because I keep telling people in the city that, that city email, I don't get it half the time. I get it on one phone or I get it, but I can't get it every time. And for 13 years, I've had the same email, Melvin Speaks, and that's the best one to get me because it doesn't change every time the city tries to change something.
Okay, I am documenting your email now to make sure you.
MSN.com, that's the best one to catch me at because the city keeps changing them. Every time there's a problem, they change it and I have to go back down and read, do my password, what have you, so, and I get locked out.
I wasn't aware of that, so that's the first I've heard of that, so I will make note of that.
Okay, so, that being said, do we want to waste time talking about Big Y?
Well, can I, can I tell you why I wanted to bring this up, Melvin?
The thing is, is I, I'm not, I'm not throwing stone at you either, I don't know why. What do you want to do forward? If you want a letter from the committee, then you'll have my vote and support for a letter.
Well, my, here's my only point. We, we, my understanding as a city resident that we gave Big Y 5 million bucks, that they were supposed to abide as part of their getting the tiff, the $5 million.
Can't hear you. You're breaking up.
Fiori, you're breaking up, we can't hear you.
Well, I'm gonna jump in until Fiori comes back and assume that what he's concerned about is that he got, we gave them the money and they didn't fulfill the obligation. How do we put something?
Owned that $5 million grant? Okay, shit, sorry, hold on.
I assume the most important thing is, is the same type.
Should we send a letter? So at least we did.
Okay, if that's which, I, I, if the other members are, if somebody can draft it, sign it, I'm okay with it. I'm having conversation with Amanda Pham with the SRA right now, with Tim Sheehan and others, on how all of this money, the ARPA money that doesn't have to come under Davis Bacon, things like that, right now, those are the conversations I'm having about how to move forward with the pot of money that exists in the city and how does the REO play into having some accountability for that. So we can talk about Big Y, which is underwater under the bridge, or we can figure out how we're going to move forward because there is still multiple pots of huge amounts of money, as Tim knows, that are going to be spent and whether or not we have any oversight of any of that. And as what's been told, I mean, to this point is, is they can write it into the contracts that they would have to be compliant. But then it still will come back to, if they're not compliant, they've already got the money, they spent the money. What can we do or what can be done moving forward after we find out they didn't comply?
Yeah, I mean, if I could just jump in, I think, you know, if, let's assume we didn't give them a tiff. We still would not like these numbers. Fiori's right, the numbers aren't that good. You know, they hit one, they missed the others. So given that we gave them a tiff, it's, I think it's more incumbent on us to, to write. We should write to them anyway, but given that we gave them a tiff, $5 million, what was the residence number here? They're 15%, it's supposed to be 30, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, to that point, Tim, if you remember correctly, or remember, I, I mean, if I remember correctly, many years ago, we gave Smith and Wesson a similar amount of money to bring their long barrel rifle manufacturing out of New Hampshire. And we were supposed to get quarterly reports at that time. That was probably almost close to a decade ago, or at least more than five, six, seven years ago. And once again, I don't ever remember them coming, and that wasn't to even, they weren't even supposed to come back to a report to the REO. They were supposed to be bringing back reports to the committee of the whole. Do you ever remember a report, a follow-up report for that money, that $5 million we gave to Smith and Wesson?
I do, yeah.
Somebody told me the other day that the actual city did pull back. I think it was the PP, the Performance Food Project. I heard that they just pulled the tiff back from somebody. They gave it because they didn't meet their requirements. So, you know, it's the ex-state level that pulls the money back. But again, I just feel that we should have at least, as a city or a board, have done our due diligence. We were asked to monitor it. And again, how this moves forward, I don't know, but I'd like to just close it out with the letter saying, I'm, you know, we're disappointed as a board, you didn't meet the numbers, blah, 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 whatever we want to write up. But if you want, we can just move on because I do want to talk about the other project also real quick. I noticed something that I'd like to bring everybody's attention on that.
If there are no objections, I, I suggest we move on, Tim.
I agree, I agree. So let's, wait, the resolution is we're gonna write a letter. We didn't decide who yet, but let's move on to the forestry operation.
And is everybody aware that Elizabeth, Liz has to leave at 2:30? So I know, there still will be a representative from Fontaine, but if she hasn't already left, just make, be aware that she has had to leave at 2:30. I'll be leaving in about, I'm gonna push it to another five minutes before I leave.
Who do we have, who do we have here from the city, besides members of the board?
And you, you have the new, Frank, not Frank, Eloy.
Eloy is here. Shay couldn't make it today. He's in the email that you guys might not have been on, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I knew Shay put out an email, I just, that he couldn't come, but who do we, so we have Eloy from the city?
Yes.
All right, great. All right, go ahead, Fiori, on the forestry operation.
Well, I was actually gonna talk about the, the Fontaine project to school. But, so on the forestry building, I, I know we, I, I sent another email out maybe an hour ago in response to Maureen sent documents pertaining to Big Y and the, the school on Fontaine's project. I did not see anything for the forestry building. But, so my only point is, I, if and when we do get those documents, I guess, in a previous conversation with Shay and Melvin, we had learned that the contractor, for whatever reason, you know, the, the job looks to have started like three months ago. The foundation's in, the steel building's in, I believe the siding's on it, so that means you had some underground plumbing, some underground electrical done. So there have been some contractors there. The problem is, for whatever reason, we as the city, as my understanding, haven't seen reports. So I'm not speaking for anybody else. Alls I'd like to make a motion is that no matter when reports come in, or if we don't have a meeting, I believe we should be getting reports timely no matter what. So that way, if we have to call a special meeting, we can call a special meeting. Because again, if the foundation guy is gone, we miss the opportunity to correct his, his numbers. If the steel guy leaves, which is the siding guy also, again, we would lose that opportunity to put the guy on notice because we didn't have a meeting, or whatever the case may be. But again, there have been no reports sent out for that project. And I would guess it's been roughly, you know, two, three months that it's been going on. So I just wanted to, you know, bring that to everybody's attention, that we haven't seen anything. But no matter what, we should still see reports, even if we don't have a meeting.
Okay.
Eloy, can you, could you pass that or share that information with Shay? And I think you grasped what he's saying, suggesting is, is as these reports come in, can they be forwarded to the members of the committee? And regardless of whether or not, not help just for when we have the meeting, because as you can see, part of our dysfunction is not, is being able to get a quorum or even get a meeting. But if the least, if the information is, is shared, then individual members of the committee can discuss it, you know, where appropriately, you know, or at least dissect it or digest it and then be prepared for when we do have a meeting to discuss it.
I will.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna, so, let's call that item closed for the second. So Eloy, if you, Eloy, if you follow up with Shay and get us a report, if you can, before next meeting, because we're in the summer, so meetings are gonna be harder attendance-wise. If you could get us a report in the next week or so on that, that would be great, and send it around. And, or at least send an email, have Shay send an email as to when he can have a report done for us. And, all right, so that's two items. Let's move on to the third.
So we're, we're talking about?
The forestry operations.
Well, not necessarily just the forestry operation. Any project that is under the REO monitoring, we should see reports for those projects in between meetings. However, when they come in, we should be seeing all reports related to what the REO is supposed to be monitoring. Does that make sense? Because that, again, I don't want to be specific in saying one project. We should be seeing all of them, whatever's active at this time. We don't know what starts up, you know, could something good start yesterday? We don't know that. Okay, that's all.
Got you.
Tim, before you move on to the Fontaine School project, can I just make one kick comment? We don't have to talk about it because it wasn't in the agenda. We can add it to next month's agenda.
Yeah, go ahead, Fiori.
All right, so one of the things that I've been to a million times, both at the City of Springfield and up at UMass Amherst, was general contractors always saying how they were stuck with file sub bidders. So, and I kept saying that, you're not stuck with them, it's all about the word responsible contractor. So there is a court case that was in Superior Court, or if that's the highest level of court, in the state of Massachusetts, that came down to the decision that said that if a city, okay, let me, let me just, one tidbit.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm gonna have to step away. So Tim is gonna clean with the meeting. I'll, I'll touch base with you Fiori or Tim for an update on what I missed. My apologies to everyone. I know what Fiori's going to discuss, so this is a good time for me to bow out. And, and I do apologize for the dysfunction and we'll work on trying to make sure the meetings are better prepared. And I'm better prepared as well. But I do apologize, just another, it's city business, another meeting regarding any city that I have to attend. Thank you.
Have a safe holiday, Melvin.
Thank you, have a good one.
All right, so, so getting back to, everybody realizes that DCAM is the clearinghouse for all cities and towns. They're supposed to rate contractors, so that way cities and towns don't get stuck with lousy contractors. Problem is, you know, DCAM, there's a lot of people that will question DCAM's reliability with those contractors. Irrelevant, has nothing to do with us today. So talking to my lawyer about how we could apply this, if the City of Springfield has a, oh God, what's the word, a, a, a screening of companies, God, what's the word for this? A, um, there's a process. Yeah, the word will come to me in a minute. But in other words. Yeah, vetting, but there's a word that I'm gonna, it's gonna come up to me in a minute and I'll, I'll spit it out at some point. Sorry about that, guys. This word always throws me off and it's so simple. But anyway, so back to the story. We don't really need to clearinghouse every single contractor. And this is where my thought, lawyer thought this was a, a perfect opportunity for us and it was smart thinking on my end. Since we have a law called the Responsible Employer Ordinance and contractors spoke to abide by it, and this has been a law for 15 years, my point is, we could have a, a, a committee. It's a committee that is supposed to screen contractors. We could, I think we should be able to have just a responsible employer monitoring, you know, vetting process that if a company in the past, or however we want to work, you know, does, can we include the past? Do we have to start fresh from a date? Can we, you know, because you can't restrict any new people. My point is, if you have data that says this contractor sucks in the REO past, we don't even have to take your bid. Okay, so, you guys following me? So you're able to vet these companies and say, we don't have to take your file sub bid bid because you've been DCAM certified. We as the city have screened you around the REO and previously you have not met the REO requirements, so we're not even gonna take your bid. Does that make sense to people? Because that's what the court case says in Superior, highest court case. So you're not gonna, it's not getting overturned. You can vet companies like DCAM does and get rid of them as far as file sub bidders and not accept their bid if you've done a screening process. Okay? And I still don't have the word. But we don't have to talk about it today. I sent the court case to people. So they should have it, it's floating around with a couple people, okay?
All right, so you're suggesting that be an agenda item for the next meeting. So everybody, everybody look for that. Fiori, why don't you plan to drive that discussion at the next meeting since you're pretty knowledgeable of it and involved in it?
Yeah, I'll get the court case to Maureen too and she can distribute it to everybody. And again, I mean, I don't know what the city would like it or not like it, how much work it would entail, but I just think it's a way to get rid of contractors that don't abide by REO and haven't abided by REO for however long it's been. Because it has been a law forever. Okay, so we can move on from that. Thank you, Tim, for the opportunity on that to speak.
Of course, thank you. All right, that gets us to agenda item, Roman numeral 3.3. Review, review the updated workforce report on Homer DeBerry. So. Anybody got a?
Yeah, I might as well just get it out now, real quick, because here's, here's what I want to question. Um, hey guys, so one of the problems is, if you look at the, the contractor list, there's only about, there's only about how many, how many contractors are really on that list? 20, 15? I don't see a miscellaneous steel guy, but more so, so I think we're missing some contractors on it. But more so, when you come to the foundation guy, right? We've lumped everybody that he might be hiring under his hours. But the problem is, if we're going to eventually get rid of contractors that aren't abiding it, if we're not tracking those companies now, then how do we, are we able to go backwards and say, well, XYZ company did, I'm gonna pick my industry. The rebar guy is lumped in with the foundation guy. So if those rebar guy's hours suck and he sucks on the next job, then we've lumped him in. We're not seeing his numbers to be able, again, we have to look at each contractor as we move forward eventually to say, you have not complied on pick a number, one job, two jobs, three jobs, five jobs. What point do we say, we really don't want your bid anymore, if that makes sense? So I don't know if we gotta break them all out. I'm just throwing it out there as a generalization and then somebody else can maybe answer it for me. But that's what I did notice.
Well, I mean, it sounds like that discussion will, will take place a little bit next month as well. But how do we look here at Homer DeBerry? So minority numbers. Eloy, do you want to, I don't know if you're in a position to summarize these for us or tell us how things are going, or we just go by the numbers or?
Oh, I am not. It, it's not my project.
I, I can, Tim, if you'd like. Liz sent the text, with people of color, we're at 32%. With women, we are at 6%.
Veteran. Oh yeah, I got it, yep.
7.5% and Springfield residents, we're at 22%. That by far is the hardest one for us to, to hit.
Could you just repeat that, which is the hardest one?
The, the Springfield residents.
And they missed that on the Big Y one too, didn't they? So what is the, what is the reason for that? Or do you, do you have any idea what the reason is? We're just not getting enough applicants from Springfield or?
Well, I, I can tell you that we have reached out. Charlie's on a call, Lisa's on a call. We've reached out to all the unions. Fiori can tell you when we were doing a steel, we had him in, in our office talking about this upfront. We, we, we tried to drive that home. We worked with the, with the unions to get us quality, qualified people. They do the best they can. We had a, a woman of color resident that worked with one of the plumbers. Quickly found out that she could not read a tape measure. We tried to work with her to get some supplemental math skills. And ultimately, she just decided that it wasn't for her, so she quit. That was, I, I don't know how many weeks and months we worked with her, with, with Adams Plumbing and Heating to try to make that happen. We had a, we had a meeting yesterday, myself, Liz, and Shay, as we have the tile company. It's M. Frank Higgins, who is a file sub bidder. They're coming in from Connecticut to start the tile work. This is a very large tile project. And they will have, when they get going doing a tile, probably 10 people that do tile. And Frank Higgins is also doing a carpet and the entry mat. So they have a pretty good portion of the finishes on this job. And they have no issue with residents, minorities, women for the carpet. But you do not get the same amount of attention with the people doing the tile work. And she was very upfront with us and one of the questions she asked Shay was, are there any organizations within the City of Springfield for residents or, or to communicate to residents to try to solicit them? Because we've tried, we've gone to the churches, we've gone to the districts with flyers. And if there's no interest, there's, there's no interest. I don't, I don't know how, how we solve that as a construction company. I don't really know how you solve that as, as a community, but I think that's the, the bigger question. It's just, I'm a construction guy, I'm not a, I'm not a people person. Most people will tell you that, that know me on a, on a job site. But that's what I see is, is the biggest. But, uh, that's what I see is, is the biggest challenge.
So, so you're able to get Springfield residents for carpet, but not for tile? Um, I don't know enough, but.
The tile trade, Tim, is primarily, uh, Eastern European. Most of the tile, you have Ayat and King, and Frank Higgins, uh, pavilion floors. And ninety-nine percent of the workers that you see, if you go to the job site, they're all uh, Russian, uh, Eastern European descent. That's, that's what it is. Um, you don't see a lot of Springfield residents that, that are doing the tile work. They would, they would love, she, she would love that there's a list or a group of people, she would hire them immediately.
There are Eastern European people who don't live in Springfield, obviously, so.
Correct.
Because some Eastern European people would live in Springfield, but, but, um. Yeah, I, I don't know enough about the recruiting, you know, side of this or whatever, to make, you know, any strong suggestion. I, um, um, how do you guys generally recruit? Um, I mean, do you go to places like Putnam and Chicopee Comp? And try to get people who are graduating or looking for jobs kind of thing, or?
Yeah, Charlie's shaking his head yes to all of those questions.
Yep. Charlie, if you're doing it on the, on the carpentry side, do you have any thoughts on this? Um.
Well, the, uh, the, um, I can't speak, Higgins is a, is a, a tile company, basically tile implant. They, they are signed with us, and they are signed with the Masons, uh, uh, union. The Masons do the tile. We do carpeting and vinyl, um, BCT, and those types of, and we're, we're very active in recruiting. Um, now, it's a small niche market for flooring in this area. And to be honest with you, uh, the Eastern Europeans have come, uh, to this country in a large group, and it's based out of two churches in Westfield, one in Greenfield and one in Chicopee, and they, um, they pass on the trade. Um, as a matter of fact, I just put an, a person of color into the, um, which is a, a different local from Local Three Three Six. Uh, it's a statewide local person of color from Springfield, who has all the skills, he's been doing it for thirty years. And, um, you know, he just, he never really thought that he'd have an opportunity. Um, it's part of my job is to get out there and make sure people know the door is open to everybody. And, uh, he went to work for Ayat and King this week, they, they love him. It's, it's not easy getting the name recognition out there. The other part that we talk about is, the, I, I believe the young lady who went to work as a plumber was someone that I actually referred to, um, go to the job site. Um, when we're trying to take people that have never done construction, and, and put them in the field to do that work, um, it's very difficult. We probably, you know, no, everybody wants to be a carpenter until they gotta go on the roof in August. And everybody wants to be a plumber until, um, they have their first toilet explode. And, uh, it's, it's, these trades are hard trades. Um, you have to love the work, or you, you can't do it. It's, um, people give it a try, and, um, they'll look back at it at some point, sometime in their life and say, I tried doing that, it just wasn't for me. Um, so unless somebody has experience, and, and, you know, bringing people in, I don't care if somebody, first year apprentice can't read a tape measure. If they got a good attitude, um, it's my job to teach them. It's my, you know, um, it's my job to make them as successful as they can. Um, but, but just trying to force people into these positions isn't easy. We get our best, our best students from Putnam aren't the kids that come right out of high school and go to work, they're the kids that have went out there and got kicked around by life for a couple of years, and they still like this work, and they come in, and then they, uh, succeed at it. I think, I think the numbers are good here. I know that, uh, from my perspective, I think H. Carr is my own contractor. They could do better, and I know that their numbers have gone up because of the pressure the Fontaine Brothers has put on them. And, uh, and that's the difference. Um, I, I've also made sure that when I'm talking to our city residents, I say, hey, you're a resident, if you're looking for work, make sure you go to Putnam. I mean, excuse me, De, De Berry. Make sure you go over there and check out that job. And, and directing people there, and I think those numbers are gonna steadily improve. And that's the difference between these two projects that we're actually looking at. Is there's a contractor that's actually applying pressure, and there's a contractor who, who didn't. He didn't take it seriously, and C. Floyd. And you, you see how much better, uh, Fontaine's numbers are in general. Uh, then, because they're taking it serious, they're trying. And it, it's not easy when we, and what Fiori was talking about, you can actually, anybody here on this can look up Attorney General, um, um, bid protest decisions. And you can see, company called CTA was qualified by the state as a big general contractor, they do a hundred million dollar schools. Um, they got, they were, um, towns failed to, uh, qualify them. Because, uh, even though they're big, they can handle, financially they can handle these jobs. They did such a poor job, that more than one town has said, you're not a qualified contractor. So I mean, you could look at that, um, eh, you know, if you're gonna write a letter. And, and if you are gonna write a letter on big Y, I would also ask you to CC the mayor on it, and let him know that they've used contractors, uh, C. Floyd used contractors that are repeat offenders. Um, and they're not, they're, they don't do my work, but Marion Excavating, based right here in South Hadley, has done about four or five REO projects. And have they, have they brought any Springfield residents into their fold? Have they worked at integrate, integrating their workforce? Um, I don't think they have, and these numbers, these numbers say it right there. Um, when you bring an out of town, uh, New Hampshire-based contractor, and they're looking for a city resident, it's gonna be a temporary job. That undermines the whole purpose of the REO. If you, if you want to give people jobs, they gotta be full-time employees. The company has to embrace them and not hire them spot higher for each REO project. Um, Gagla Ducci, they're doing a great job in Springfield. They, they've, they've worked to make their workforce, uh, residents, you know, they, they, their women numbers are high. They, they're taking it serious, and they're integrating people into their workforce. They're not just, okay, we got an REO job coming up, let's call it a temp agency, and hire somebody for two or three weeks to meet the numbers. That's, that's really the difference between these two projects that I see. And thank you for giving me a lot of leeway, but, um, that, that's what.
Do you guys mind if I chime in right here? Because I got the perfect, um, perfect thing to point out to you guys with the Fontaine project that, do you mind if I chime in, guys? So, why don't we go to the, the minority hours, when you look at this project, and you look at the contractor list, or at least the ones that they've supplied, the fifteen? And again, I want to be clear, there are more contractors on the project. But every single contractor, uh, or, or, you know, however you want to call them, made an effort. So you went from twenty percent to thirty-two percent. So I, I don't want to be sitting here in meetings going, I'm happy with five percent, uh, or seven percent. I'm happy with twenty percent. Here's the perfect example of every single contractor doing the work and, and, and exceeding the goal. Women hours, we've got, um, six point one seven hours, but in reality, we have one, two, three, four, five, six contractors who have zeros, and one contractor has less than one percent, and the other ones have made an effort. My point is, we have seven contractors that, what are they doing? So, and again, we're meeting the goal, we're almost there, but the point is, I'm, I don't want to be happy with meeting the goal, I want to exceed the goal. So those other seven contractors should be doing something, and the same thing with veterans. Even though we're at, we exceeded the goal, uh, we still have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven contractors that have zeros. Uh, so again, if those seven contractors did something, and I'm not saying anybody's neglecting to get them to do something, my point is, they're doing, right now they have zeros. So again, that number could be fifteen percent, it could be twenty percent. And I do understand that it's hard to get people to, to designate veteran, but the same thing in the, you know, the Springfield residents, too. We still have one, two, three, four, uh, four contractors, uh, that have zeros, one that has one percent, uh, two, including mine, are at five and six percent. So again, we, we, um, just pointing out that, that again, when con, when every contractor makes the effort, as you can see, we will exceed the goals, okay? I don't, I, I really want to start moving our language to exceeding the goals, not just meeting the minimum. Okay, does that make sense? So I, I just want to point that out. Thanks. Did I lose you guys, or am I here?
No. I heard you.
Cool, thanks, guys.
Um, yeah, I heard you, you make good points. Sorry, I was muted. Um, so, um, relative, uh, was it Frank? When you were just talking about the two general contractors, one making an effort, which is Fontaine, and one not, was that the one that not, I didn't get their name, was that the ones that did the big Y project? Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, that was Fiori that said that, not, yep.
Yeah, that's the, that's the, that's the, uh, the, the big Y project, correct.
Yeah, so, um, so we gotta wrap up here. It seems to me we need to have a discussion next month, not only on Fiori's suggestion for next month's agenda, but also on this recruiting thing. And, and, um, by writing the letter on big Y, that will kind of, um, it kind of point out that the GD that was on that project really didn't get it done. And they might, the project might be done, but, um, it didn't meet the goals of, of the REO. So, um, what do you suggest for a discussion next month? Is there some way for us to, and, and, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna run into summer vacation stuff as well, but, um, so for next month's agenda, we got Alloy talking to Shay about, you know, regular reporting on the different projects. That'll be one agenda topic for next month, whatever you guys come back with. A second one will be the thing Fiori is sending around about the, uh, the state law, or the, the new act about following up on contractors that are consistently not meeting, and how to, uh, not hire them again, or how to go about that process. And this third thing is more on the recruiting side. Are they related, or is there something, someone we could invite to the meeting to help? Or, you know, Frank, you made a lot of comments, and then Charlie complimented your, your firm for doing so well on pushing and pushing and pushing. Uh, is there, um, you have any suggestions?
Can I, before you, Frank, jump in, Frank, can I make a comment? Um, because here's where you are correct, and I'm a little lost. At one time, we actually had contractors, you know, making efforts. The problem is, we as the board have no idea of what efforts are being made by those contractors. Uh, so again, the unions, however they're reaching out, they're doing their outreach. We believe that most of them are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Uh, the open shop, we had them putting ads and papers. There was a list of things that, that was a, a fair, uh, effort being made on their behalf. I don't really know if we have anything like that. So what is, the question really is then, is what is, what is the guideline as to making a fair effort? And should we as a board see the efforts made on behalf of these contractors? Because again, we moved away from individual contractors to the end numbers, and as long as those end numbers meet, the project did well. But again, you know, it, it doesn't mean that contractors still are making no effort, or a little effort, and it still doesn't mean that, uh, you know, we got a lot of contractors that are repeat players that are still not doing well in these categories, okay? Just wanted to quickly point that out. Go ahead, Frank.
So in that discussion, we could talk about incentives, or are, are we, not incentives, but do we ask contractors to, you know, we have, we put it on the GC, so should the GC come, um, and report to us, as Frank is here, on how they're doing, and what the efforts they're putting in? We missed that on the big Y, uh, but, um.
I, Tim, I think I'm correct, that we actually did have a form of, um, their corrective action, it's a corrective action report form. Uh, am I correct, Frank? Do you guys get those from contractors? Then the question would be is, with these contractors that have poor numbers, should we as a board ask for those to see what, what they're doing? And if it sounds legit, great that they're doing this, and if they're not, then maybe we, you know, I, again, this will be the discussion for next month, but I'm trying to point out that I think that document is in place, was one of the forms we made up a while ago. Whether it's still being used, I can't tell you.
Alright, so that's, uh, Alloy, could you follow up with, uh, Shay on that? To see if there's something that you guys keep track of?
Yeah, there, there is, and there's something in the ordinance. Uh, there's, there's a term, a popular term, good faith effort. And should, and we should have a list of, uh, all the efforts they've made, phone calls, uh, emails, uh, any, uh, contact with organizations uh, throughout the, uh, penancy of the project. Uh, that should be part of the, uh, package.
Alright, so, and that's something you, you, you guys have talked about. You, you do evaluate good faith efforts when you're going out there?
Uh, you know, being relative to the new, uh, Shay and I have talked about it. Uh, and I'll have, and I'll continue, we'll continue to talk about it, uh, and, and see we can come up with some form. Uh, but I know it's, there is something in the, uh, ordinance, the REO ordinance, that we can, uh, develop it from there.
Alright.
Yeah, in the back, Tim, real quick, in the back of everybody's head then, I think maybe the board should see these corrective action forms. If, not for one item, or one of three categories bad, but let's, i- if fifty percent or two of the four categories they're bad on, then maybe we should see these corrective action forms to see if they're really making an effort again. People can choose to look at them, but I, I think we should at least see this stuff. We can decide that next week, but I want to put that in people's heads, that I think at some point, we need to see who these bad apples are, what their corrective action is, and then what do we do about it? You know, what can we do about it? Thanks.
I just want to say this, if, if they make a good faith effort and is documented, then the project is in compliance. You know, we, we, we got, that, that should be clear. So the, the fact that they made a, uh, an effort and they documented it. You know, I like to see if with, uh, with some of these contractors, if they, uh, they not make a good faith effort, maybe they can, uh, do something in terms of working with local agencies, if even it's funding some kind of program for training or so, or whatever. You know, look at things like that.
Yeah, I think, I, I think you're on to something there, but, so why don't we, why don't we just say, well, well, um, our agenda for next month, or, well, there's an action item still that, uh, will take on. The agenda for next month is, uh, checking on their, you know, getting the regular reports to us. Um, that's Alloy and Shay, um, can talk to us or submit, uh, regular reports on the projects going on, whether we meet or not. The second item is Fiori's thing that he's sending around to us about the ways to get rid of contractors if they're not meeting our, our requirements. And the third thing is a description of good faith efforts. What are we doing as we're kind of related? Item two and item three are a little bit related to each other. Uh, what are we doing about good faith efforts? Uh, um, so that's what I see. Um, there's a letter to big Y to be written. Uh, I'll take responsibility for, for, you know, the first draft of that anyway. I'll send it by, um, you know, Melvin and, you know, anyone else who wants to, uh, you know, Fiori or whatever. I don't see it.
I would like our office to get that, so we can have some input.
Yeah, yeah, I'll draft something, Alloy. If you guys can help with putting it together, I'm not really good at finalizing letters and all that. I mean, I'll get something started, and, uh, you guys can, uh, add to it. And, um, we'll work on it over the next week or two and get it out. Um, alright, any other things for, uh, this meeting?
No, I just wanted to double check that. No matter when we get the Forest Park stuff, since that's, uh, uh, been ongoing for a while, we get those reports as soon as they come in. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, yep. Alright, guys, we, uh, we got a late start, but we talked about a lot of good stuff here. Was there anything anybody else wanted to say in this meeting that, um, that we haven't had time to? Charlie, Frank, Alloy? Charlie, Frank, Alloy?
Um, yeah.
Lynn, go ahead.
I'd like to just, uh, again, say to, to everybody, the idea of the REO is great to, to improve people's lives, and, and really, we can't do it, uh, one job at a time, it has to be, the contractors have to have, uh, a plan, especially these folks that are local, that are working around different cities. The folks that they hire here need to be part of their regular crew. Uh, there's nothing worse than the practice is checker boarding. When you just hire somebody, they know there's no hope of moving to the next job or advancing in a career. Um, but they're just here to fill a slot. I know that I wouldn't want to take a job like that and feel, and just feel like I'm being used to fill a slot. You re, they really have to embrace the idea of integrating residents, women, and people of color into their regular crew, and that's the only way to change the culture and to improve the numbers. And just, just, I like to keep that in mind when I'm, when I'm dealing with people like this, you know, it's not just about this job, it's, it's about changing lives.
Appreciate that, Charlie, that's a great perspective. Um, okay, um, just going around the table, any last comments, Alloy?
None for me.
You're all set, Frank?
All set.
Thank you, um, Lindsay?
None for me, thank you.
All right, thanks, Lisa?
I'm good, thank you, sorry.
Uh, no problem, glad to have you here, thank you. Um, all right, um, Maureen?
I'm all set, thank you.
All right, and Fiori? I don't know where, if we, if Fiori still, so well, it's Fiori. All right, well, not hearing from Fiori, but, uh, good discussion, everybody, thank you, and, um, we'll see you next month, I, I don't know, next month, it would be July, you know,
Mm-hmm.
It would, would be July nineteenth, maybe it's the third. I, I'm, I'm out, uh, the last two weeks of July, so I wouldn't be able to make a meeting that was at its regular scheduled time. I could make a meeting on Tuesday, July twelfth, which is three weeks from today.
Well, I go, I can go ahead and set that up, and then who can make it can make it, and then if we can't.
Actually, that's only two weeks from today, now that you think about it.
Usually it's the second Tuesday.
It is, all right.
Yeah.
Um, on, on this, while, while we're on, uh, does that, is that doable, two weeks from today, for you, Fiori? How about you, Lindsay?
Um, as of now, yes, that's fine, I would just have to make sure that I'm off by three.
Okay, um, that's fine, uh, it's okay for me, so, uh, I can't, I don't know if we've lost Fiori, and I can't get Melvin, so, hope it's not on, so let's tentatively plan on Tuesday, July twelfth, two weeks from today.
Okay.
Um, that's, and, and we'll see how it goes from there.
Okay, I will do that.
All right, great, Maureen, thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
Have a good one, yeah, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.